Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Smithtown Planning Board is now in session of the United States of America through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. We thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. First item on the agenda, the Planning Department recommends the following items for adjournment as we have insufficient information to act upon them. Part two, item three, number 1114, Spirit Estates. Part three, item five, number 2010-06, KVC Holdings. Item six, number 2010-02, King Cullen Grocery. Item seven, number 2007-01, Gyrodine Company of America. Item eight, number 2007-04, Society of St. Johnlin. Item nine, number 2009-05, FB4 Realty. Part four, item 10, number 1053A, Berg Estates. Item 11, number 911A, Glen Hill Northern. Part five, item 12, number TC10-01, T-Mobile Northeast. Mr. Chairman, these are the items the Planning Department recommends for adjournment this evening.
Is there anybody here to be heard on those items to be adjourned? Hearing none, a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the items read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, we now move on to part one of the agenda. Item one, number 1144, Esther Estates. The applicant is requesting to subdivide a 1.992 acre lot into four single-family building lots. The preliminary map of Esther Estates, number 1144, is comprised of a single tax lot, which is rectangular in shape and owned by the applicant. The property contains an existing two-story dwelling and three additional lots are proposed. The property has road frontage on a town road known as Lake Avenue, and the applicant proposes to create access to the two rear lots by constructing a cul-de-sac to be known as Esther Drive. The property is split-zoned, R10, single-family residential, 10,000 square feet minimum, and R21, single-family residential, 21,780 square feet minimum. To the north, west, and south of the site are properties zoned R21, and to the east properties are zoned R10. The applicant's request to subdivide the property into four lots meets the density requirements for the combined zoning districts. Lot numbers one and two meet the town of Smithtown lot area and setback requirements for the R21 zoning district. Lots three and four are split-zoned between R21 and R10, with the front portion of the properties lying in R10 zoning and the rear in R21. Both lots do not meet the minimum lot area requirement for the -- I'm sorry, excuse me. Both lots do not meet the minimum rear yard setback requirement of 75 feet for the R21 zoning district. Additionally, lot number three does not meet the minimum lot area requirement for the two zoning districts. The average of both districts require a minimum lot size of 15,065 square feet. Lot three is 12,710 square feet. The applicant is requesting variances for a reduction in the rear yard setbacks for lot numbers three and four from 75 feet to 50 feet, and a reduction in lot area from 15,065 square feet to 12,710 square feet for lot number three. The planning board may grant these variances per Section 322-30.4 of the Town Code. These variances will be listed in a table of modifications on the final map to be filed with the Suffolk County Clerk. The elevation ranges from 139 feet to 137 feet above sea level. The parcel is level with no steep slopes. The depth of groundwater is more than 10 feet, and no problems are anticipated with regard to groundwater. The site does not contain any wetland or natural surface water features. The property is wooded with trees such as oak, maple, and pine. The proposal appears to comply with the standards of the Suffolk County Sanitary Code with respect to sewage flow and septic system setbacks. The Highway Department recommends approval. The Engineering Department recommends approval with conditions that are stated in the resolution in the conditions of approval. The Traffic Safety Department, in their memorandum dated December 8, 2010, states that they are strongly opposed to the naming of streets after people's first names due to the fact that they, the signs, are frequently stolen. Planning recommends the applicant contact the Director of the Traffic Safety Department to discuss an acceptable street name to be used prior to submitting the application for final approval. The following resolution is recommended for Esther Estates, number 1144, from the Department of Environment and Waterways pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Be it resolved that the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown hereby declares itself lead agency on this matter and finds that this matter is subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and is classified as an unlisted action pursuant to SECRE. And be it resolved that the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown does hereby issue a SECRE negative declaration, determination of nonsignificance, and EIS is not necessary, in the matter of the application for subdivision approval by Atrix Enterprises LLC, doing business as 176 Lake Avenue, for Esther Estates for the following reasons. A, the proposal does not appear to significantly threaten any unique or highly valuable environmental or cultural resources as identified in or regulated by the Environmental Conservation Law of the State of New York or the Smithtown Town Code. B, the parcel does not appear to suffer from any severe environmental development constraints, no poor soil properties, no high groundwater, and no unmanageable slopes. C, the small size and nature of the proposal mitigate against a significant adverse impact upon the environment. D, the proposal appears to be consistent with the planned use of the parcel and compatible with neighboring land uses. E, the project as proposed on the Tree Preservation and Land Clearing Plan prepared by Michael James Hildebrand, licensed land surveyor dated June 22, 2010, provides for the retention of a significant amount of existing trees and natural vegetation upon the development of the subject parcel. It is additionally recommended that the Planning Board impose the following condition on any approval it may grant on the above-referenced subdivision application. Prior to the commencement of construction activities at the subject parcel, including land clearing or other site preparation work, the applicant shall abide by the following conditions. A, all limits of clearing and any individual trees to be preserved within clearing areas must be marked with snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing. Said fencing shall be located no closer to the trunk of any tree to be preserved than the drip line of said tree. This area to be preserved shall be as indicated in the Tree Preservation and Land Clearing Plan prepared by Michael James Hildebrand dated June 22, 2010. B, upon completion of the installation of fencing as required above, the applicant shall provide written notice to the Department of Environment and Waterways requesting inspection of the limits of clearing as marked in the field by the sighted fencing. C, the applicant shall not commence construction activities, including land clearing or other site preparation work, until the marked limits of clearing are approved in writing by the Environmental Protection Director. And D, the snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing used to delineate the limits of clearing shall be maintained in place by the applicant until the completion of all land clearing and grading activities at the subject parcel. The Planning Department recommends the approval of this preliminary map and offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves the preliminary map of Esther Estates, number 1144, subject to the following conditions. A, the final submission shall include all requirements of Section 248-15 and 248-16 of the subdivision regulations. B, the applicant shall submit with the final map a complete traffic sign detail plan and street lighting plan in accordance with Section 248-16F of the subdivision regulations. C, as noted in the Engineering Department's memorandum dated August 13, 2010, at such time when the final application is submitted, show erosion control measures and details on plan. Also show the size of the existing drainpipe where the two new catch basins are to be installed. And be it further resolved that this preliminary plat approval shall be valid for a six-month period to end on August 2, 2011. Mr. Chairman, this is the Planning Department's recommendation for Esther Estates, number 1144.
Thank you. Anyone here representing the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Vincent Trumarko. I represent the applicant. I have offices at 1038 West Jericho Turnpike. The only thing that I wasn't sure I heard correctly was the strong recommendation from the Traffic Department about the name. I didn't quite get that, Mr. Chairman.
Well, it's a comment.
They want you to change the name of the street from Esther.
And did they say why?
Yes, because the Traffic Safety Department opposes streets named after people because the signs are frequently stolen. So they would prefer a name that -- other than a first name.
I guess they're stealing the signs on Anne Marie Drive, which goes into proposed Esther Court.
Well, what has already happened is, I believe, in defense of traffic safety, they have to live with. What they're saying is if they have an opportunity to have a street name changed at the time of the subdivision, is the time to do it. So I think it's a preventive measure based upon past practice.
All right, we'll speak to them. Thank you. Everything else is fine with respect to the Planning Department's recommendation.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this application? Hearing none. A motion there for the SECRE negative, please.
In the matter of Esther Estates, number 1144, motion to approve the SECRE negative declaration.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered. On the -- a motion there on the preliminary map.
In the matter of Esther Estates, number 1144, motion to adopt the resolution as read, subject to all the conditions stated in the conditions of approval recommended by the Planning Department.
Second.
Aye.
Second, Ed.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered. You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, we now move on to the next item on the agenda. Under Part two, item two, number 1125, excuse me, Fulton Estates. The applicant is requesting to subdivide a 1.074 acre parcel into two single-family lots. The final map of Fulton Estates, number 1125, is comprised of a single tax lot that is rectangular in shape and owned by the applicant. There is an existing one-story dwelling on the proposed lot number one, and one new dwelling is proposed on lot number two. The property has 160 feet of road frontage on an existing town road known as Fulton Boulevard. The site is entirely surrounded by properties zoned R21, single-family residential, 21,780 square feet. While the proposed lots meet the lot area requirement for the R21 zoning district, the applicant will need variances for side yard setbacks and lot width at setback for both lots. Lot number one will require variances to reduce the minimum side yard setback from 16 feet to 9 feet, and total side yards from 34 feet to 19 feet, and to reduce the minimum lot width at setback from 100 feet to 96 feet. The side yard reduction is due to an existing freestanding garage that is within the building envelope. Lot number two will require variances to reduce the minimum side yard setback from 16 feet to 12 feet, and total side yards from 34 feet to 28 feet, and to reduce the minimum lot width at setback from 100 feet to 64 feet. While the variance requests would appear significant, most of the lots on the south side of Fulton Boulevard were created from the map of Jericho Hills, Section 2, file number 1929, that created 80-foot-wide lots. The frontage average of the subject parcel is 80 feet and consistent with the area. Therefore, the Planning Department has no objections to this request. The Planning Board may grant these variances per Section 322-30.4 of the Town Code, and they will appear in a table of modifications on the final map to be filed with the Suffolk County Clerk. The property is mostly level with elevations ranging from 110 feet to 136 feet above sea level. The depth of groundwater is more than 10 feet, and no problems are anticipated with respect to groundwater. The site does not contain any wetland or natural surface water features. The proposal appears to comply with the standards of the Suffolk County Sanitary Code with respect to sewage flow and septic system setbacks. The Engineering, Highway, and Traffic Safety Departments recommend approval. The following resolution is recommended for Fulton Estates, number 1125, from the Department of Environment and Waterways pursuant to State Environmental Quality Review Act. Be it resolved that the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown hereby declares itself lead agency on this matter and finds that this matter is subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and is classified as an unlisted action pursuant to SECRE. And be it resolved that the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown does hereby issue a SECRE negative declaration, determination of nonsignificance and environmental impact statement is not necessary, in the matter of the application for subdivision approval by Thomas Bucy of Fulton Estates, number 1125, for the following reasons. A, the proposal does not appear to significantly threaten any unique or highly valuable environmental or cultural resources as identified in or regulated by the Environmental Conservation Law of the State of New York or the Smithtown Town Code. B, the parcel does not appear to suffer from any severe environmental development constraints, no high groundwater, no poor soil properties, and no unmanageable slopes. C, the small size and nature of the proposal mitigate against a significant adverse impact upon the environment. D, the proposal appears to be consistent with the planned use of the parcel and compatible with neighboring land use. E, the project as proposed on the Tree Preservation and Land Clearing Plan prepared by Michael James Hildebrand, licensed slant surveyor, and dated February 3, 2010, provides for the retention of existing trees and natural vegetation upon the development of the subject parcel. The Planning Department recommends the approval of this final map and offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the final plat of Fulton Estates, number 1125, is hereby approved, subject to the following conditions. Mr. Chairman, conditions A through L are standard conditions that are placed on all subdivision and two EDA applications. Condition M is specific to this application. The applicant will be required to obtain a separate building permit from the Building Department for the construction of retaining walls as noted in the Engineering Department's memorandum dated August 23, 2010. And be it further resolved that the Chairman of the Planning Board is hereby authorized to sign the final plat, thereby approving said plat after the Town Board has posted a performance bond of satisfactory form and amount. And be it further resolved that the conditional approval of said final plat shall expire 180 days after the date of this resolution and within 90 days after the Chairman of the Planning Board signs the final maps of this plat, unless said plat shall have been duly filed or recorded by the owner in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. As a note to the board, if the board favorably considers the applicant's variance request, the Planning Department suggests the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby modifies the building zone ordinance of the code of the Town of Smithtown for the subdivision known as Fulton Estates, number 1125, as detailed in the table of modifications below. This table shall be shown on the file map to be filed in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. Mr. Chairman, this is the Planning Department's recommendation for Fulton Estates, number 1125.
Thank you. Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Zolo, attorney for the applicant, Tom Bucy. And I have nothing to add, so unless anyone has any specific questions for me or my client, Mr. Bucy.
Is he acceptable to your client?
Yes.
The recommendation?
Yes, we went over that. And addition, I filed the updated posting.
Okay.
My client's accepting the terms.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this application in the audience? Hearing none. A motion for the SECRE negative for Fulton Estates, 1125.
In the matter of Fulton Estates, number 1125, motion to approve the SECRE negative declaration.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. On the final plat for Fulton Estates.
In the matter of Fulton Estates, number 1125, motion to adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendations of the Planning Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered. On the building zone ordinance modifications for 1125.
In the matter of Fulton Estates, number 1125, motion to approve the variances as listed in the table of modifications.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered. On a performance bond.
Mr. Chairman, the performance bond estimate, be it resolved that the Chairman of the Planning Board be authorized to sign the performance bond estimate for the map of Fulton Estates, number 1125, in the amount of $16,250, and establishing an inspection fee of $1,300 and a cash deposit of $1,000. Therefore, the amount of the performance bond to be posted with the town shall be $15,250.
A motion on the performance bond.
Motion to approve the performance bond estimate for the map of Fulton Estates, number 1125.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part three, item four, number 2010-09, R&amp;F Management LLC. The Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on February 2, 2011, to consider the above-referenced petition for a change of zone from WSI Wholesale Service Industry to NB Neighborhood Business to legalize the existing use of the premise. The site is a 1.55 acre parcel developed as a strip shopping center containing six storefronts. The rear portion of the property is wooded and slopes up steeply. The petitioner requests a change of zone from WSI to NB and proposes to continue the current uses on the site, a mix of retail and other businesses and a strip shopping center. This petition is not consistent with the town's comprehensive plan and should be considered as a request to amend the plan. The areas to the north and south of the WSI District along Jericho have been zoned for residential use since 1932. To the north of the subject site, north of Manor Place, are single-family homes in R10 Residential 10,000 square feet zoning. To the south, across Jericho Turnpike, is a motel in WSI zoning, and south of that parcel are single-family homes in R21, single-family residential, 21,780 square feet zoning. To the east and west of the site, the zoning is WSI, with a vacant commercial building, a fencing company, and an exterminating business to the west, and town open space, offices, and a filling station to the east. The site is split-zoned, with the southernmost 300-feet zone WSI and the rear northern portion zoned R10. It should be noted that the petition is an error in showing the zoning as WSI for the entire parcel. Since the petition request is for a change of zone from WSI to NB, then only the WSI portion can be reviewed. If the applicant wants the R10 portion to be included, he will have to formally modify his application. The portion of the subject site that is zoned WSI was developed as a single-use industrial building in 1969. Parking was adequate for the uses at that time, and the uses were in compliance with the zoning. Subsequently, the building was divided into multiple tenant spaces. Since 1969, the site was used for a variety of permitted uses, including office, car rental, bar, cabinet maker, and similar uses. Currently, the site appears to have many food establishments that are permitted in this zoning category, either as a counter-service restaurant, provided they have more than 16 seats, or as a restaurant, provided that they have table service. Most recently, a site plan exemption was approved in 2009 for installation of a retaining wall. In reviewing that exemption request, the Planning Department noted several site violations and conditioned the approval of the permit subject to the correction of these violations. In reviewing this petition, the board should consider several issues. Specifically, the board should consider whether this meets the objectives of the town's comprehensive plan as to the location and placement of commercial centers, or whether approval of this petition would set a precedent for alteration of the comprehensive plan, or whether this petition would be considered spot zoning that benefits the landowner as opposed to the town or community. The subject site is part of an area along both sides of Jericho Turnpike, New York State Route 25, that was originally zoned in 1932 for what we now classify as neighborhood business. This road, along with Terry Road or Smithtown Boulevard, reflected the original idea that the frontage on major roads should be zoned commercial. By the 1950s, it had become apparent that such a practice was harmful and should be avoided. Such strip commercial areas substantially reduced the traffic capacity of a corridor along, with creating traffic congestion. They also negatively impacted the downtown and other commercial centers by expanding the availability of retail space beyond what is needed by a community, and as a consequence, reduced the overall value of retail property. However, once land is placed in any commercial category, it is very difficult for a municipality to change these areas to a less intensive use. In 1959, the town created a new zoning category known as Wholesale Service and Industry, WSI, that included a variety of low-traffic, generating commercial uses, or commercial uses that rely upon automotive access. Retail uses were then confined to specific center locations, either in downtown areas or at specific areas with traffic signals that permitted left and right turning movements. The remaining commercial frontage along New York State Route 25, about 70% of the length, was rezoned from NB to WSI. While the land of the -- while the land area of the petition is small, the impact of changing the zoning is significant in that it could set a precedent for the entire corridor. The Town of Smithtown currently has the highest per capita retail floor space in comparison to the five western towns in Suffolk County. It is important, therefore, to determine if there is any unique community basis for this rezoning. This petition appears to be a spot zoning request that is not permissible practice. As defined in New York zoning law and practice, the term "spot zoning" is used by the courts to describe a zoning amendment that is invalid because it is not in accordance with a comprehensive or well-considered plan. The Court of Appeals has said it is the process of singling out a small parcel for the benefit of the owner of such property and to the detriment of other owners. Spot zoning is the very antithesis of planned zoning. In layman's terms, there must be a public purpose for every change of zone, and zoning ought not to be changed for the sole benefit of the property owner. It appears that the applicant is also making this petition in order to permit current uses that are in violation and not allowed in the WSI District. While this should not preclude consideration of a request for a rezoning, it should not be considered as the basis for the rezoning. It should also be noted that if this petition is approved, the car leasing business on the site, Enterprise Car Rental, would be a prohibited use in the NB District. The Suffolk County Planning Commission has informed us that they will no longer be issuing decisions on change of zone petitions for small parcels of land unless there is potential for significant countywide or intercommunity impacts. However, they will continue to provide comments on such matters. The following response has been received from the Suffolk County Planning Commission. Pursuant to the requirements of Section A14-14 to 23 of the Suffolk County Administrative Code, the above-referenced application, which has been submitted to the Suffolk County Planning Commission, is considered to be a matter for local determination with comments as there is no apparent significant countywide or intercommunity impact. A decision of local determination should not be construed as either an approval or disapproval. The following comments were provided by the Suffolk County Planning Commission. The following comments were provided by the Suffolk County Planning Commission. One, there is a concern regarding the re-establishment of strip commercial zoning along the Route 25 corridor and the adverse effects of associated high-motor vehicle trip volume and roadway congestion. Two, the petition appears to be a spot zone as the request is inconsistent with the pattern of zoning along Route 25. Three, granting of the petition would tend to substantially undermine the effectiveness of the zoning ordinance. Four, approval of the change of zone petition would tend to establish a precedent for such land development requests. Mr. Chairman, the planning department is recommending that the board consider adjourning the matter for an onsite inspection.
Thank you. Anyone here representing the applicant?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. And I have offices at 1038 West Jericho Turnpike, Smithtown, New York. If you think back, I guess it was maybe a year ago, maybe a little longer, planning made the same, planning department made the same statements about a parcel of land on the corner of Sunny Road and Jericho Turnpike, formerly known as the, was part of Cider Lumber's property, and he had a few different tenants in there at the time. And we came in and we asked this board for a favorable recommendation to the town board to change that zoning from WSI to neighborhood business. And as it happens, the town board did grant the change of zone, and it's now neighborhood business. And the applicant at the time, the current owner, is doing well with that subdivision, I'm sorry, that shopping center. This whole business about WSI zoning and when it was started and enacted in the 50s, it's so outdated and so silly that half the people that want to rent space in an area that's WSI zone can't rent the space because it's illegal. In my case, in my client's case, in this particular situation, and obviously ignorance is no excuse, but my client rented to a barber shop. Now, one would think, what's wrong with a barber shop in a WSI zone? I don't know, but it's not permitted. That's one situation that he has, and yeah, it is illegal. Did he know it? He probably didn't, but... And the other situation is there's a convenience-type store there. And obviously, that's retail, and WSI doesn't permit retail. And if you think about this, this, this small strip center, the nearest retail to the, to the west is probably a couple of miles, which is the Northgate Shopping Center. And to the east, I don't know, maybe four miles, five miles. So there is a necessity for these small shopping centers to be permitted to have retail uses. In fact, that, that shopping center contains this convenience store, which is, is very appropriate for that particular area. There is a motel across the street, and many of the people from the motel go across the street and, and purchase various items that otherwise they would have to go to Northgate or go further down to King Cullen to, to the large shopping center in Comac. You know, it's time for a change. We were hoping, I don't know where the planning department is and the town board with their recommendations, to add other permitted uses to WSI. WSI is a zoning that's so outdated that it doesn't make sense anymore. And when we have this situation, the only thing that we can do as attorneys for applicants is to come to a zoning which makes sense so that people with small shopping centers can survive. They can't survive right now. I mean, there's so many things that are considered retail, and rightly so, because it's, it's a retail use, that can't be put in WSI. Now, I'm not asking this board to change the ordinance because obviously it's not your, it's not in your power and not your prerogative. But I think it makes sense to make a favorable recommendation to the, to the town board. You did it in St. James. Hopefully, you'll, you'll do it here. Most of that shopping center, as Frank said, is comprised of, of fast-food places. And there's really not a parking issue there, and if there was, the fast-food places probably would have more effect than any other type of use with respect to parking. And that's there already, and that's something that's permitted in WSI. I don't know why we, as the town of Smithtown, allows fast-food places, but you don't allow a convenience store. Makes no sense. And that's why we have to come here and ask you to recommend to the town board that this zoning category for this particular spot isn't appropriate, and it doesn't make sense. Now, WSI permits a lot of automobile uses, but how many automobile repair shops can we have? How many body shops? How many glass repair places can we have? WSI is, is really outdated. It's a terrible zoning. Maybe it was good in the 50s and the 60s. And, and also, we're not in the business, the town shouldn't be in the business of saying, well, we have a shopping center down the road, and, and that's the reason why we shouldn't allow retail two miles away, or even right next door. Economic zoning is really the thing that we should be looking at, and if a guy wants to put up a, a convenience store, economics will dictate whether he'll make it or not. Not the town of Smithtown with this antiquated zoning. So when you go out and look at it, you'll see that there's probably four fast-food places, a convenience store on the end, a big piece of property right next door that used to be an equipment place, that went out of business. And you go down the line, there's only, there's only so many things you can do in a WSI zone. And it doesn't make sense for, for the town to continue with this zoning. But again, that's not your prerogative. I'm just asking you to look at this and say, how is it going to hurt if this is made neighborhood business? You know, we talk about spot zoning, and, and the county says, we're not going to comment on any of this anymore, but they commented anyway, so, you know, what, what is that all about? It's, it should be meaningless, meaningless, and this board shouldn't even think about it or countenance it because of what their own words were. I think, again, just give it some, some real thought. It works in St. James. And I think it will work here. It'll allow, it'll allow my client to survive in a marketplace that there are plenty of vacant stores, both in, in, right in the heart of town and going in all the, in WSI zoning, all the way up and down Jericho Turnpike. What do we have? We have shopping centers, and we have WSI. How many body shops can we, can we have? How many other WSI uses? There's got to be a change, and, and people are suffering deeply because of, of this WSI zone. So I ask the board to, when they go out and look at it, look at it, look at the place next door that's now vacant. They're trying to rent it. I don't know what's going to happen. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this? Members of the board, any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Maybe some for our planning department and maybe for Mr. Tramarko. On the map, there's a yellow sort of a rectangular-shaped box that says "subject site," which is surrounded by a bigger red box.
Right. The large, the large, mostly rectangular-shaped box represents the entire site. That's the entire piece of property. The rectangular yellow box shows you what portion of the property is zoned WSI.
So the only part that the application refers to is the part that's in yellow?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
But you're saying the whole parcel is the red part, so they'd have to amend their application to include the part beyond what's marked in yellow?
If, if they chose to do that, yes.
All right, now, was some mentioned about the issue of the retail and shopping centers. Before you, if you went west, you would come to, before you came to Northgate, you would come to Morwood, right? There's a shopping center there?
Yes.
And also, there's a CVS on the corner?
That's correct.
Was there a zone change associated with that CVS, do you remember?
Yes, there was.
And what was that change from to?
That was WSI to NB.
To NB? Okay. And Mr. Tramarko, this is the shop, the center, this is where there's a Pudgy's right in there and a Domino's?
There's a Pudgy's, a Domino's, I believe a bagel place, a car rental place, and at the corner, the, the Westerly corner is a convenience-type store where you could go in and get bread and milk and so forth.
Do you have four or five or six ongoing established businesses in that?
Yes, oh, and a barber shop.
And you know how many years some of these businesses have been there? Any idea?
I, the only one I know that's been a long time is, is the, is the bagel place. Pudgy's probably been there seven or eight or 10 years, I'm guessing.
I understand.
Domino's, I don't think has been there that long. I think there was something, a food-type of establishment before that, you know, quick, fast food. I don't know what was there before the convenience store. The convenience store is probably four or five years at the most, maybe six years. And the car leasing place, that's only a few years.
So the, we talk about the one in St. James, that was, if I recall correctly, primarily vacant at the time it was approved. And here, you're talking about, we have four or five or six ongoing established businesses that have been operating there for a while.
Yes. St. James, I don't know that it was primarily vacant. It was, actually, it was the same car leasing place that rented... Why can't I think of the?
Cider Lumber?
It was Cider Lumber's place, but he rented to the car leasing place, and there was a, no, it wasn't, it wasn't vacant.
It was a cabinet place, and originally, there was cabinets in there and...
That's right, there was cabinets, then there was a contractor, general contractor, a contracting place.
That was Vasco Holdings, was that, that application that you're talking about?
Yeah, Vasco Holdings.
When we looked at it, it was pretty vacant, as I recall.
It was pretty empty when I went there. But anyway, the point is, it was a change there, and from what I remember, was something either just starting, or it was vacant, or, or was fledgling businesses. And here, we have businesses that have been in the community for...
That's correct.
Quite a few years.
Yes, yeah.
And the, your client there, on the back end of the property, understands that that's not going to be part of the application?
What I don't understand is, I'm not sure where the parking in the back ends, and if that's all in the WSI zone. There's, there's property that he doesn't even use, and that might be something I'd want to take a look at myself, because Frank may be right. We may be parking in the back, and it may be in a residential zone, but I don't think so. I think a lot of that is unimproved.
Well, I see there's some parking in the back outside of the yellow line, that apparently there, maybe the car rental place is using or someone like that. Then there's some, looks like some wooded area, and all around it going west, there's quite a bit of wooded area. Is that all zoned? The R-10, Frank? All of that wooded area behind those other places?
Yes.
That's all zoned on R-10?
Looks like there's a little bit of the parking area that goes into the R-10.
Yeah.
But not, but also the R-10 appears to be vacant. Just wooded.
Any other questions by the board?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple. What would the effect, if, if the town board ultimately denied this zone change, what would the effect on your client be?
Well, he'd lose at least two tenants, the barber shop, the convenience store. And it would be really a multiple effect, because then he'd have to find tenants that, you know, to, to replace them. And I don't think he'd get any more fast-food places in there. I don't even think the health department would permit it. I guess the reason why he has the flow is because all of that land that's vacant in the back gets computed for sanitary flow for the, for the health department. But it would be devastating, you know, in a situation like the convenience store is almost like an anchor store there, and they do service people, you know, from, from the motel, and people drive in there, and, you know, it's an in-and-out kind of thing. It would be a substantial, it would be a calamity for this man. I mean, he's an individual owner, he's not a big company or anything.
If I understood the planning memo correctly, you still, if we, if, if the town board grants this zone change, you're still going to have a problem with the car rental company, so...
Yes, he's, he's aware of that.
So if you, if it's denied, you have, you're going to lose two businesses, but if it's granted, you're going to lose one business?
Well, basically, I guess you could say that, yeah.
And as I recall, in, in Vasco Holdings, you had overwhelming community support behind you. You submitted a number of letters, you had people come down here in favor of the application.
That's right.
Do you have that same support in this application?
Well, we, we haven't had anybody that objected, and we sent the letters, and it's gone to all of the, the residential properties. As you can see, we're residential ourselves, so from that boundary line all the way back to the north, I don't know, we probably didn't go to the south too many residential uses because the motel is, is pretty deep. But we haven't, I haven't had any calls in the office about any type of objection. It really doesn't affect the residential people any more than it affects them right now with the fast-food places.
Well, I think what you should do there, if we do, we're going to do an onsite, and then if it does end up going to the town board, I think you need to clear up
I will.
The back of that property. What, where the property, where, where's the delineation between what you want of their change for zone and what is existing zone for R-10? All right?
Yes.
Anyone else? Frank?
I'd just like to note, I just reviewed the plans that are in the file. The apparent area that, what you're looking at, where there's storage of vehicles in the back, apparently, that's not of this applicant, from what we could see. The site plan that's been submitted with this application shows the gray area of the parking lot right behind it. And where you see those vehicles parked in the back there, that, there's, on the site plan, shows a fence at this point right here, and that whole area from the edge of the, where you consider the gray parking area back, is shown as vacant on here, but we can see vehicles stored there. So apparently, that's from the, it looks like the next story, the user next door is parking there.
I'll check that also.
That needs to be cleared up.
Yeah, I seem to remember something like that, too. I don't even know how they get there. I guess through the, the...
Well, there's an access point, you could see it from the adjacent property.
From the, what used to be truck loaders.
You know, is there access, unrestricted access to the back of the lot, to the neighborhood that's, would be north of it? Or is it people from that neighborhood want to?
No, you can't get to that, to this site. You can't. It's topographically, there's...
Too steep?
I would say, I, I don't know the exact elevations, but there, there's a steep difference between those two properties. In fact, the property adjacent to it, which is that vacant property we acquired, that was with the subdivision that this board... was with the subdivision that this board approved about five years ago, because it was so steep, we couldn't develop it even for commercial purposes.
That's town property?
That's, yes, that, which is seen right next door.
That's east of the subject.
That's correct.
When was the other zone change done, the CVS, from WSI to neighborhood business?
Probably within the last five to 10 years.
Okay, and what was the Planning Department's recommendation on that?
We were against that.
Any other questions? A motion there for an onsite.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on the reference RNAF Management 2010-09 for an onsite inspection by the board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, we'll now move on to the next item on the agenda, under Part Six, Item 13, Number 1070, Keystone Terrace. The applicant requests to extend the performance bond for a period of two years to expire on October 6, 2012, in order to obtain more time to complete construction and all necessary improvements. The applicant received conditional final approval for the six-lot subdivision from the Planning Board on October 6, 2004. A performance bond estimate in the amount of $85,045 was approved by the board, and subsequently signed by the chairman. The applicant submitted the bond monies and all related materials to the town, and the Town Board accepted an irrevocable letter of credit in lieu of a performance bond on June 13, 2006. Planning Board approval for this performance bond expired on October 6, 2010. The Engineering Department contacted the applicant by letters dated August 24, 2010, and November 30, 2010, informing them the bond expired, and that the applicant should contact the Planning Department to make the appropriate application to the board for an extension. The applicant submitted a performance bond extension application on January 4, 2011, to the Planning Department, and the application was distributed to all departments concerned for review. The Engineering, Highway, and Traffic Safety Departments have no objection to the performance bond extension request, and have determined that the bond demand is sufficient to cover all remaining improvements. Planning has determined that all required public improvements have not been completed, and that all of the homes have not been constructed within the subdivision. Therefore, the Planning Department has no objection to the applicant's request. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves a retroactive extension of the performance bond for the subdivision known as Keystone Terrace, Number 1070, for a two-year period to expire on October 12, 2012. Mr. Chairman, this is the Planning Department's recommendation for Keystone Terrace, Number 1070.
Is there anyone here that, on this application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Give your name and address, please.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is John Visi, residing at 111 Hot Water Street in Manaville, New York. I'm here to represent Keystone Terrace, and I asked the board if we could have this bond extended, and due to the fact that we're still under construction on the majority of the subdivision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any questions from the board? Any questions in the audience, no? Any questions from the board? A motion to approve the performance bond extension for Keystone Terrace.
In the matter of Keystone Terrace, Number 1070, I move that we adopt the resolution as read, in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. We thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the last item on the agenda, under Part Seven, would be the adoption of minutes for the October 20, 2010, and January 5, 2011 Planning Board meetings.
Motion on the minutes.
I move that we adopt the minutes of October 20, 2010, and January 5, 2011.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?